I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Consilla.
Here.
Alderwoman Pusa.
Here.
Alderman Bitner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Dittelman.
Here.
Alderman Gah.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Weigand.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Barfield.
Here.
All sixteen are present, roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Police Chief Bill Clay.
Here.
Fire Chief Tom Corr. Finance Director Jamie Maitre.
Here.
City Engineer Tim Gregowitz.
Here.
Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn. Human Resource Director Sherry Faber.
Here.
Director of Parks and Recreation Debbie Velvo.
Here.
Health and Housing Director Bob Sabo.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole. Director of Wastewater Royce Carlyle.
Here.
Director of Economic Development Anissa McCaskill.
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearmint.
I don't see Leander. Fire Chiefs excuse, and Deputy Fire Chiefs here. Kenny Vaughn's excused, he's trying to fix, meet somebody about a problem in one of our buildings. And Jason Poole's on vacation, so he's excused. And Leander, I'm not sure if he's gonna come in or not. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, if you're able, if you please stand and join us for the pledge.
(audience clapping) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic before which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice in all.
Just real quickly, because there's a pretty good sized crowd here tonight, a few faces I don't see all the time. If we ever had to leave this building because of a, or leave this room because of a storm, the police officers who are present and the staff would kinda guide you across the lobby, across from the clerk's office is a set of stairs to go downstairs to an area that's a very safe storm shelter area. If we ever had to leave the building because of smoke or fire, we would ask that you either go out the front or back main doors. And we would ask that you try to go across the street carefully and meet in front of the courthouse sign, so that we could check with all of you if the people you're with all are accounted for. Hopefully we never need that, but we do occasionally need to go over that. And restrooms or handicap restrooms are several places, right behind this wall and down the hall as well, across from the clerk and treasurer's office. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we do have a public hearing this evening, and I'm gonna officially open the public hearing. The public hearing tonight was advertised, and it's based on Brook Taylor Estates. Austin Engineering is the one representing them here tonight. And public hearing for a vacation plat for Brook Taylor Estates. A sixty-seven point two acre A1 single-family residence district zone, partial located at the northwest quadrant of the intersection of Frank Scott Parkway and Eleventh Street, South Eleventh Street, it's in Ward Eight. Anissa, do you wanna say any opening remarks as we start this?
If you'll look at the aerial that's on the screens around the chambers, so what we've done is we overlaid the plat that was approved in 2005, I believe, for Brook Taylor Estates. As you can see, the lots are very small. They currently, as shown, they do not comply with our current A1 regulations, which requires a minimum square footage of ten thousand square feet. So the vacation that is before you this evening is to erase the subdivision. There had been a lot of discussion as the Villas of Hollybrook, which you'll hear about later on tonight, was coming forward for approval, where they were going to only vacate a portion right along the corner of the intersection. However, in talking to them and the Walbuckers who own the property from whom Hollybrook is purchasing, it was agreed upon that they would vacate the entire subdivision and erase the subdivision. And that is what is before you this evening. So erasing that entire subdivision, you will see later on tonight, Villas of Hollybrook going ahead and subdividing and taking out the portion that they will be developing, and that plan will come forward at a later date. But this is strictly to erase the lot lines and erase the subdivision that does not conform to our current A1 standards.
And let me just add, before we open it up for any comments, at the time when that subdivision was approved, and it was either 2005 or '06, I forget the exact dates, but it was right about that, it was in the first year or so I was mayor. There was a lot of public question raised at that time, because I think, Anissa, these were basically approximately six thousand square foot lots?
You have everything ranging from just under six thousand square feet to somewhere around nine thousand, but none of them are to the current A1 standards of ten thousand square feet.
It was this subdivision that started a lot of dialogue in various committees and amongst different groups, and at that time, the city council, probably within just several months later, raised the minimal lot size to ten thousand square feet. And that was, and it was fair to say, it was a result of discussion, heavy discussion, and much, you know, editorializing by people after this was put in place. So, and then, this owner at that time, the recession came, the housing market really plummeted pretty poorly, and this area was never developed as a subdivision. And so, one of the things tonight, by the part of this public hearing, is to make it clear and understand that this original plat was to be vacated, and that it will be reassembled, is the fairest way to say it, right, Anissa?
Well, I can't even say reassembled, it basically, the lots disappear, Hollybrook would be able to purchase what they need for their development, but other than that, it's just vacant land, so if someone were to come forward and want to redevelop, they would have to come forward with a new plat and a new plan to show what they would be wanting to do on the property.
And the minimum lot size would be ten thousand square feet.
Yes, sir, with an A1 district.
Yeah, so that's, I wanna make that clear, that's the, you know, one of the issues that was talked about for a long time. So at this time, I will open this, we already opened the public hearing, but thank you, Anissa. If there's no other staff, or is the, if the gentleman from Austin Engineering has anything he wants to add, this time, yes, sir?
I'm just here for questions.
Okay, okay, that's fair enough, and maybe there will be, maybe there won't. Is there anyone from the public that has anything that they'd like to say, or raise questions about this public hearing, the specific public hearing of vacating the plat for Brook Taylor Estates on this sixty-seven point two acres? Is there anyone from the city council that has anything to say in regards to this? Holding this public hearing is one of the requirements as we go through this process, and like I said, it was properly advertised, and by having this opportunity tonight for members of the public, neighbors, businesses, or the city council to speak and go on record is the purpose of this public hearing. So hearing no other comments, questions, or anything else to be asked, I'm gonna close this public hearing. We'll now go to public participation of the city council meeting tonight, and as I recognize those who might be interested in speaking, please raise your hand. Once I acknowledge that, I'll ask you to come to the microphone and give your name. Try to keep your comments to two to three minutes, and try to keep it on a topic that's either on the agenda tonight, or something pertaining to Bellevue city government. Who would like to go first? Saw a young lady's hand up there. Yes, ma'am. Come up to the mic right there if you will, Ally.
Alright, so I'm Ally Dyer. For those of you who don't know me, some of you might know me better, as Reverend Rob Daughters' daughter, Dyer's daughter, wow, that's a tongue twister. Okay, so I'm approaching my senior year of Bellevue East High School. For the past two years, I've organized the Blessing Bellevue banquet, I have posters if anyone's interested in specific details in that event. But the event benefits three local charities, some of which you may be familiar with, Beacon Ministries, Carriage House, Family Solutions, and Project Compassion. Each of them work with families and young children in our community who are in need and in crisis. So our event is August 11th, we have a silent auction, we'll have live music from Bellevue Senior Julia Donato, as well as a dance performance from local dance group Lou Kids. So this event's just a lot of fun, it's a good opportunity to serve our community, it's something I enjoy doing. And currently, we've started a mentorship program for young women especially, to really get involved in the community, and to inspire them to be leaders. So I'm currently working with two upcoming freshmen at Bellevue East, and they're learning how to take on this event, because next year I will no longer be able to organize this and manage it. So through that program, we're teaching them leadership skills, as well as how to plan a big event like this. Thank you for your time.
If there's any questions for Ally, but you know, several of us attended this last year, and it's a great event. The charities that she mentioned work hard in Bellevue to assist a lot of people in need. And I really want Ally, thank you, it's quite a, quite a, quite a job you've taken on the last several years for such a young age, and you've done an excellent job, and I would encourage the aldermen, I'm gonna plan to be there again that night, and we're gonna try to tell and convince others to join us. It's a lot of fun, but it's also a ways to raise a few dollars for these three charities, and they help a lot of people. So thank you for coming and making this pitch.
Thank you for having me.
Anyone else this evening would like to say anything this evening at public participation? Yes, sir?
About the Union Avenue funding project coming from CDBG money and not from TIF III, which is in TIF III. TIF III will collect twelve point seven million dollars from the taxpayers this year. I don't see how it's feasible that three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars isn't available for a road project within TIF, allowing the CDBG money to be used for projects that are outside of TIF, such as the West End. I asked this question during Streets and really didn't get a very good answer, and Alderman Bitner asked for a follow-up, and I don't think he really got a good answer either, so maybe Alderman Ovian can explain why his area town, which is CDBG not in a TIF, is foregoing a three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar project to be done inside a TIF district, rather than helping the streets out on the West End. Next is, in reference to the Bellevue Valley grant that's being applied for, the mayor stated he didn't know if the funding for this grant was upfront or reimbursement, but he did say that if it was a reimbursement, the city would not pursue the grant, because we don't have the money to pay for it upfront and then wait for reimbursement. So I'd say that that question needs to be answered before we spend another three hundred, or thirty-five hundred dollars to apply for a grant that we won't be able to use in the future. Thank you.
And I normally don't do this, but I'm gonna answer this right now, so I don't forget. That thirty-five hundred dollars, Eric Schouster's on vacation this week, but we talked about it. The additional information needed of engineering for that bridge is gonna be necessary for any type of grant we apply for presently or in the future. So I'm gonna recommend to all of you that we still consider that, even though we are still researching this grant, and we're not totally sure that this will be the right grant at the right time. Eric's waiting for some information to come back, but we are going to, we do feel we need the thirty-five hundred dollar additional engineering on that bridge that's out there, so that we can be prepared in the future when the opportunity presents itself, as soon as that is. Okay, anybody else from public participation? Hearing none, I'm gonna close public participation and move on to the regular portion of the minutes. We have nothing under presentations, or recognitions, or appointments tonight. Approval of the minutes, I'd ask for a motion to approve the city council minutes from, and the executive session minutes from June 18th, 2018. Alderman Schaefer, Alderman Wiggington, motion and a second. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of receiving and filing those two minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Claims payroll and dispersments, I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and dispersments in the amount of one million, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents, and the payroll in the amount of eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-one cents. Motion by Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Steele. Any additions or corrections, or questions on that, those items? Hearing none, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries. We go to ordinance and legal review, Alderman Wiggington.
On behalf of ordinance and legal review committee, I would like to make a motion to approve an ordinance amending Article 15 land usage of the revised code of ordinances of the city of Bellevue, Illinois, by adding chapter 163, small wireless facilities, providing for the regulation of and application for small wireless facilities, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Wiggington, do I hear, second by Alderman Pusa, do I hear any discussion on this? Any questions raised? This is a deadline we're facing by the end of the month, to make sure that we fall under the accepted guidelines, I guess, of what the state legislation just passed. Okay, statutory compliance. Okay, if there's no further questions, I call for a roll call.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Motion carries. Madam Clerk, I just wanna note that Leander is here. Okay, good. Okay, at this time, we go to Alderman Dittelman, Master Sewer Committee.
On behalf of the Master Sewer Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve the change order number two of the long-term control plan, Phase Four, Twenty-Third Street Sewer Project, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Motion by Alderman Steele, or motion by Alderman Dittelman, second by Alderman Steele, any discussion on that, that recommendation coming, that motion from Master Sewer? Hearing none, roll call.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Pusa, if you wanna read the motion, I'm gonna add that explanation there like we didn't come in.
Okay, you mean read it out?
Yeah, you read it.
I make a motion to approve the low bid of one hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars from S. Schaefer Escavating for the demolition of the following property. Ninety-six, twenty-three West Main Street, three-twenty-six North Tenth Street, fifteen North Tenth Street, twenty-five, ten East Main Street, twenty-six, South Seventy-seventh Street, five-hundred Park, ten-fifteen Arthur, five-oh-nine West Adams Street, thirty, Periwinkle Circle, ten-oh-five West D Street, eighteen-oh-three Bunson, nine-oh-six North Charles Street, six-hundred Warby Avenue, and two-ten West Adams Street.
We have a motion from Alderman Pusa, coming from committee, second by Alderman Elmore. What I'd like to say is, in committee, what we explained is, we wanna, we're asking to approve all these, but we wanna make it clear that we explained in committee, Jamie and I and Bobby went over his budget, Bob Sabo, and the general fund, these, these, number of, if you add all this up, it comes from a couple different pots of money, TIF and general fund, primarily just those two. The general fund portion got hit hard already this sharp new fiscal year, because we had a house that's coming down next week for almost twenty-nine thousand dollars, this right chart of that, that was destroyed by fire, and it's still kinda leaning, and we gotta get it done, and it was not, wasn't in a TIF, so that was almost thirty thousand dollars right there out of the budget. So what we agreed in committee to bring forward is to approve these demolitions, but, and we talked to Schaefer, the people who got the bid here, Schaefer Escavating, they would hold these prices for this entire year, but we're going to, we're telling you that we are planning to hold back on ninety-six, twenty-three West Main and five-hundred Park temporarily. We gotta make sure as we release the money that we don't drain everything from Bob Sabo's general fund, this blind item in the budget, because if we have to have money for board ups or emergency tree, that all comes out of the same line item. If we have a dangerous tree situation, and it's on city right of way, and it's gonna hurt somebody in one of these storms or something, that it's partially, you know, so we don't wanna take that whole, so we're gonna kinda watch it and see if we get to where we're comfortable, where we can release some more money. We feel very confident we'll be able to handle these additional demolitions. Schaefer's agreed to hold these two back until we tell him we have adequate funds, but I just wanted you to understand that, we're asking to approve them, but we're also letting you know that we're going to use our administrative discretion before we release those last two. Does everybody understand that addition to the motion? Roger?
Those properties will come down in this discourse sometime.
We have, we have every intention, the bottom would have to fall out of the general fund, and heaven forbid that will happen, but we're hoping that there's no problem, and I think Jamie and I feel confident that we'll find this, you know, little bit of money will surface here, and we'll probably, may have to do them one at a time, but Schaefer said they would do that. Does that, everybody understand that? With that being said, if there's no further questions, roll call.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion from Traffic, who do we got here, Rafi?
Thank you, Your Honor. Eleven D one, motion to amend chapter fifty-two traffic of the revised ordinances of the city of Bellevue. By repealing section fifty-two point two-one-eight of the ordinance, seventy-six oh-three dash two-zero-one-two, schedule oh, remove handicap parking sign from five-oh-three North Jackson, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Ovian, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Anthony, do I hear any discussion? All in favor of having this motion passed and have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We go to Finance. Alderman Consilla, I would ask that you might consider if the, if the council agrees, could we do the first three together? They kinda deal all with sanitation, is that acceptable by everyone?
Yeah.
And would you read those first three motions together?
Okay, eleven E one, motion-
I'm sorry, sanitation and, but it's okay, it's equipment, basically, is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to approve purchase of one used sanitation truck from Elliott Equipment for sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Motion E two is a motion to approve purchase of sanitation truck body from Downing Sales and Service for a hundred and five thousand, one hundred and two dollars. And E three is a motion to approve financing from Commerce Bank Clayton Holdings LLC at three point one eight percent for the purchase of a wastewater treatment plant, Vactor Rudder Truck, and is so moved.
Motion's coming from the committee and from Alderman Consilla, do I hear a second? Alderman Steele, do I hear discussion on any of these three motions? Alderman Elmore.
So is eleven E, one hundred and five thousand, one oh-two, is that a rebuild, repair of a current truck that we have in stock?
No, that's a truck that we have, but we're gonna take the chassis that is still, we feel in good shape, decent shape, and put a new body on it. What's happened with these one-man trucks is, there's, the bodies are splitting, you know, we haven't been in the one-man truck business that many years, it's still relatively new, and we're finding that the steel on these one-man trucks, when they compact them so many times, the bodies are splitting. We tried to repair one this winter, it lasted about four months, and it split again when we, when we welded it. So now, we've got one more at a welder, more professional than what our guys were able to do during the winter months, and we're trying that, we're trying this new body on one of them, and then in the motion also, we got that used truck there for sixty-nine thousand, seven fifty, to help us get through, we, you know, we bought a new truck earlier this year and ordered it in the budget that you all approved, and we didn't see these one-man trucks coming apart at the seams like they've, that's happened. John and Jason came to my office several times in the last several weeks, and we've kinda just all shook our heads at the, the way they have just really shown enormous amount of wear in a short time, so, yes, ma'am?
Your Honor, I'd like to also state that when they were welded, they still dripped grease on the streets, and then that caused another problem.
No, we were, we were to the point for a while, and we probably still are, we're running the streets, we were right behind some of these trucks, because they're making such a mess in some of the neighborhoods, and it's embarrassing, we're trying to deal with it, but we, this is, if we had a ton of money, we would, we would try, but the trouble of it is, if, even if we, even if you all said, order a couple more new trucks, it's nine to eleven months to get a new truck, so that's part of the problem.
And on that, what does a new truck cost?
Two hundred and fifty thousand roughly, for a one-man truck.
And we have not even started the ordering process of the nine-month wait.
No, we ordered the new one already, and it's been-
Another one?
The one that was in the budget for this year was ordered immediately-
Well, it was ordered in May after approved by-
After approved by, after the new fiscal year.
I understand that.
So it's already been in the process for two months, and, but, but, you know, we could see it in six more months, we could see it in seven more months, it could be, you know, eight or ten, you know, it just depends on how they're doing with their scheduling of trucks. But it's, it, you know, it is what it is, it's, you know, last year we bought two new rear loaders, and we had taken a beating on them, but when we hit the recession and money really got tight, we backed off of getting a truck every year, and that cost us, because if you don't keep up with this equipment every year, you pay the fiddler too. And, and so, it's been a, it's been a learning process, so. So what we're asking here tonight is to approve the, the used sanitation truck from Elliott Equipment of sixty-nine thousand, seven fifty, the body from Downing Sales and Service for one-oh-five, one-oh-two, and then the, approved the loan, which is on the Vactor truck, that was in the budget. Royce, what was the, what did we, how much do we allow for your Vactor truck, Royce?
That's right, four hundred thousand.
Just wanna make sure you didn't feel slighted.
Oh.
But the Vactor truck is something you don't buy, they last usually, they-
Twenty years, I think.
Twenty years, we're hoping, but if we don't get this new piece of equipment to spell the old one, this is what keeps some of our sewer problems at a minimum, is to get those sewers cleaned out on a regular basis, so that's a must.
So, back to the nine-month timeframe that it takes to order a new truck, which is very cumbersome, I understand that, and getting a new truck is the only way we're gonna see anywhere close to a three point one eight percent interest rate, if it's a new truck, we're not gonna get that on a used truck. And if we are talking, I'm not talking about in the budget, I'm talking about are we even in discussion of doing a loan like we did on the Vactor truck on a sanitation truck? And if we are talking, I'm not talking about in the budget, I'm talking about are we even in discussion of doing a loan like we did on the vector truck on a sanitation truck?
We do that now, the new truck that we got ordered will be, will be probably a loan too, right?
Yes, so it was approved back in May, we discussed that if it gets closer to delivery, that's when we go out for financing, because the bank will, well, they will, but, I mean, why would we take out a loan now for something that we're gonna get in nine months? So usually we wait till we're about a month out, and then we'll go get quotes from local banks and determine who's the cheapest, and then local government will lock it.
And I've also given Jason and John the authorization and the recommendation to keep watching for some demos. We thought we had our hands on a new demo two weeks ago, but it was sold before we could lock it in or bring it to you, and ask them to put it on hold. There could be another demo that pops up from one of these dealers that is what would, would meet the specs that we're looking for, so we'll keep watching for that as well. If we can expedite another truck that's new sooner, we will, we'll bring that to you. So we're trying, we're trying, it is, it is, it is a problem, and I will tell you, as sure as I'm sitting here, when we faced you with some of these concerns about the two-man trucks last year, none of us had any indication that these bodies were gonna, that two or three of these trucks were gonna start to, to split the way they have in the last six months, four months. It's just been, been a whole new dilemma saga of, of problems when you have a lot of equipment. Okay? Everybody understand the motion for these three? If there's no further questions, I'll call for a roll call on these three items.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Those three motions pass. At this time, Alderman Consilla, you want to take the next one separately?
Eleven E four, I make a motion to approve contract with AT&T for Police Department, LEADS, connection to comply with state mandated connection upgrade.
Jamie, what did we figure this out is coming to per month that we didn't have in the budget?
About a hundred and twenty dollars more than we had budgeted.
What we had budgeted. But this is a mandated update from the leads program for the state, we, we have no choice, but I did not want to sign this contract for another, you know, thousand-plus dollars a year, or whatever it's gonna be, more than that, without you all knowing what we're doing, so this came on us, and the chief brought it to us several weeks back, and so we, this is what this is about, so are there any, we got, do we have a motion?
I have motion, I don't think we said-
We have a second, second by Alderman Ga, do we have any discussion or further questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Motion carries, Alderman Consilla.
Eleven E six, I make a motion to approve the contract amendment with TWM for Bell Valley Three Industrial Park Services with costs not to exceed thirty-five hundred dollars.
I hear a second, second by Alderman Ga. Let me just add to this again real quick. Eric Chouster, who's our Assistant Director of Economic Development, who, and who writes the city's grants for the most part, is waiting to get final word, but it is true, if we have to front a grant for out there right now, we're gonna have to keep looking, because it would be very hard to front a five million dollar grant at this time, not knowing how quick they would pay us back, et cetera, so he's still looking into all that, but we, he and I did do some research, he did the research, I asked the questions. No matter what other grant opportunities, we, we need to have this additional engineering on this bridge that we found out that we didn't, hadn't given enough attention to far as the needs that we'll have, no matter what we do on that main road going through there. So this is gonna be necessary, and, and I still believe very strongly that Bell Valley Three is a very viable part of our future to get more space for industrial places to come to Belleville. We filled up one and two, they're totally fill, we've kept a lot of businesses in Belleville because we were smart enough to have that land ready, and as soon as we can figure out, you know, years ago, we got some really nice grants, a couple years in a row from the State of Illinois and the federal government. Unfortunately, right now, those grants aren't there, so we're looking outside at, we're looking at some other federal grants on our own that aren't pass-throughs from the, to the state. We're gonna keep being aggressive, looking at this, I really want to get that third phase started. While we still have an agreement with the landowner, and that's coming back to you in a couple weeks for an extension, we're working with them right now, but I think we've got that worked out. So we'll keep you in tune, but it's just one of those things that I, there's, there's something going on in every part of the city, and Bell Valley Three expansion, I believe, is still a viable part of our future. So right now, I'm asking, the motion is there and a second, right?
Correct.
To approve this additional thirty-five hundred dollars for TWM, who's got the, who's had the contract to do the, the plating of that Bell Valley Three to begin with, so that we can be ready in the future for additional opportunities that come along. Roll call.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Motion carries, Alderman Consilla.
Eleven E six, I make a motion to approve the contract amendment with TWM for Bell Valley Three Industrial Park Services with costs not to exceed thirty-five hundred dollars.
I hear a second, second by Alderman Ga. Let me just add to this again real quick. Eric Chouster, who's our Assistant Director of Economic Development, who, and who writes the city's grants for the most part, is waiting to get final word, but it is true, if we have to front a grant for out there right now, we're gonna have to keep looking, because it would be very hard to front a five million dollar grant at this time, not knowing how quick they would pay us back, et cetera, so he's still looking into all that, but we, he and I did do some research, he did the research, I asked the questions. No matter what other grant opportunities, we, we need to have this additional engineering on this bridge that we found out that we didn't, I hadn't given enough attention to far as the needs that we'll have, no matter what we do on that main road going through there. So this is gonna be necessary, and, and I still believe very strongly that Bell Valley Three is a very viable part of our future to get more space for industrial places to come to Belleville. We filled up one and two, they're totally fill, we've kept a lot of businesses in Belleville because we were smart enough to have that land ready, and as soon as we can figure out, you know, years ago, we got some really nice grants, a couple years in a row from the State of Illinois and the federal government. Unfortunately, right now, those grants aren't there, so we're looking outside at, we're looking at some other federal grants on our own that aren't pass-throughs from the, to the state. We're gonna keep being aggressive, looking at this, I really want to get that third phase started. While we still have an agreement with the landowner, and that's coming back to you in a couple weeks for an extension, we're working with them right now, but I think we've got that worked out. So we'll keep you in tune, but it's just one of those things that I, there's, there's something going on in every part of the city, and Bell Valley Three expansion, I believe, is still a viable part of our future. So right now, I'm asking, the motion is there and a second, right?
Correct.
To approve this additional thirty-five hundred dollars for TWM, who's got the, who's had the contract to do the, the plating of that Bell Valley Three to begin with, so that we can be ready in the future for additional opportunities that come along. Roll call.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Motion carries, Alderman Consilla.
Eleven E six, I make a motion to approve the contract amendment with TWM for Bell Valley Three Industrial Park Services with costs not to exceed thirty-five hundred dollars.
I hear a second, second by Alderman Ga. Let me just add to this again real quick. Eric Chouster, who's our Assistant Director of Economic Development, who, and who writes the city's grants for the most part, is waiting to get final word, but it is true, if we have to front a grant for out there right now, we're gonna have to keep looking, because it would be very hard to front a five million dollar grant at this time, not knowing how quick they would pay us back, et cetera, so he's still looking into all that, but we, he and I did do some research, he did the research, I asked the questions. No matter what other grant opportunities, we, we need to have this additional engineering on this bridge that we found out that we didn't, I hadn't given enough attention to far as the needs that we'll have, no matter what we do on that main road going through there. So this is gonna be necessary, and, and I still believe very strongly that Bell Valley Three is a very viable part of our future to get more space for industrial places to come to Belleville. We filled up one and two, they're totally fill, we've kept a lot of businesses in Belleville because we were smart enough to have that land ready, and as soon as we can figure out, you know, years ago, we got some really nice grants, a couple years in a row from the State of Illinois and the federal government. Unfortunately, right now, those grants aren't there, so we're looking outside at, we're looking at some other federal grants on our own that aren't pass-throughs from the, to the state. We're gonna keep being aggressive, looking at this, I really want to get that third phase started. While we still have an agreement with the landowner, and that's coming back to you in a couple weeks for an extension, we're working with them right now, but I think we've got that worked out. So we'll keep you in tune, but it's just one of those things that I, there's, there's something going on in every part of the city, and Bell Valley Three expansion, I believe, is still a viable part of our future. So right now, I'm asking, the motion is there and a second, right?
Correct.
To approve this additional thirty-five hundred dollars for TWM, who's got the, who's had the contract to do the, the plating of that Bell Valley Three to begin with, so that we can be ready in the future for additional opportunities that come along. Roll call.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Motion carries, Alderman Consilla.
Eleven E six, I make a motion to approve the contract amendment with TWM for Bell Valley Three Industrial Park Services with costs not to exceed thirty-five hundred dollars.
I hear a second, second by Alderman Ga. Let me just add to this again real quick. Eric Chouster, who's our Assistant Director of Economic Development, who, and who writes the city's grants for the most part, is waiting to get final word, but it is true, if we have to front a grant for out there right now, we're gonna have to keep looking, because it would be very hard to front a five million dollar grant at this time, not knowing how quick they would pay us back, et cetera, so he's still looking into all that, but we, he and I did do some research, he did the research, I asked the questions. No matter what other grant opportunities, we, we need to have this additional engineering on this bridge that we found out that we didn't, I hadn't given enough attention to far as the needs that we'll have, no matter what we do on that main road going through there. So this is gonna be necessary, and, and I still believe very strongly that Bell Valley Three is a very viable part of our future to get more space for industrial places to come to Belleville. We filled up one and two, they're totally fill, we've kept a lot of businesses in Belleville because we were smart enough to have that land ready, and as soon as we can figure out, you know, years ago, we got some really nice grants, a couple years in a row from the State of Illinois and the federal government. Unfortunately, right now, those grants aren't there, so we're looking outside at, we're looking at some other federal grants on our own that aren't pass-throughs from the, to the state. We're gonna keep being aggressive, looking at this, I really want to get that third phase started. While we still have an agreement with the landowner, and that's coming back to you in a couple weeks for an extension, we're working with them right now, but I think we've got that worked out. So we'll keep you in tune, but it's just one of those things that I, there's, there's something going on in every part of the city, and Bell Valley Three expansion, I believe, is still a viable part of our future. So right now, I'm asking, the motion is there and a second, right?
Correct.
To approve this additional thirty-five hundred dollars for TWM, who's got the, who's had the contract to do the, the plating of that Bell Valley Three to begin with, so that we can be ready in the future for additional opportunities that come along. Roll call.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Eleven G one passes, at this time, Alderman Dittelman, want to read the next two together? I, where?
Sure, eleven G two, the Villas of Hollybrook, preliminary plat, preliminary plat for the subdivision of sixty-seven point zero-two acre A one, single-family residence district, applicable sections of the zoning code one-six-two point zero-three-six, one-six-two point five-seven-zero, Ward three, zoning board unanimously recommended approval. Eleven F three, thirty-two, June eighteen, Kristy Robertson, a request for a special use permit for a liquor license at two-twenty-three, two-twenty-five North Illinois Street, CNC Food, For Your Soul, parcel number zero-eight-two-one-zero-four-two-seven-zero-one-six, located in a C two heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code one-six-two point two-four-eight and one-six-two point five-one-five, Ward two, zoning board unanimously recommended approval. Eleven F four, thirty-three, June eighteen, The Basic Initiative, a request for a sign installation permit in the area of Special Control for signage at two-twenty-seven East
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wellington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Eleven G one passes. At this time, Alderman Dillman, want to read the next two together?
Sure. Eleven G two, The Villas of Hollybrook, preliminary plat, preliminary plat for the subdivision of sixty-seven point zero two acre A one, single-family residence district zone. Parcel located at the northwest quadrant, the intersection of Frank Scott Parkway and Eleventh Street into two lots, Ward eight. And eleven G three, The Villas of Hollybrook, final plat, uh, final plat for the subdivision of the sixty-seven point zero two acre A one, single-family residence district zone. Parcel located at the northwest quadrant, the intersection of Frank Scott Parkway and Eleventh Street into two lots, Ward eight.
Have a motion by Alderman, uh, Dillman on behalf of the planning commission for eleven G two, eleven G three. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Wiggington. Do I hear discussion on these? Roll call.
Dillman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
No.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bittner?
No.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Motion carries. I got fourteen votes, okay. Fourteen to two. This time we go on to the next one coming from the zoning board about eleven G four.
Eleven G four, Jack Flash and Jack Flash Splash, uh, Wharton Stores, site plan, landscape plan, and architecture elevation for a six thousand three hundred and seventy square foot convenience store, Jack Flash. With fueling stations for passenger and semi-trailer vehicles and a three thousand twenty square foot car wash, Jack Splash, to be located on the intersection of North, the Mazinad Drive and Illinois Route fifteen. Parcel number zero seven dash zero three dot one, or dot zero, dash three zero zero, dash zero zero seven, Ward eight.
We have a motion by Alderman Dillman from, and second by Alderman Wiggington for eleven G four coming from the planning commission. Any questions on that? Yes, sir.
When we were first approached, um, the, uh, the Kellars were talking about having, um, fast food restaurants connected to the Jack Flash. Is that still?
There's going to be one inside, I believe, is still part of the plan. I just haven't gently insisted.
On the site plan, that's included in Dropbox and that was also part of your packet. You'll see that there is the Jack Flash convenience store and then it shows about a sixteen hundred square foot addition. They're still working with a user. It would be a quick service user, kind of like a Subway or something along those lines. Not really your sit down like a Denny's or something like that, but that is shown on your site plan as a future portion of the building.
Would, did they have any discussion as to how soon that would happen?
They're actively in discussions with someone right now. They just have not finalized anything.
Yeah. I, I, I think the plan is once they start, it'll all be at one time.
Part of what was discussed at the planning commission was the fact of how the building elevation would continue along that side. But they would have to do something about the signage for that portion. So that was discussed that they're actively working with someone and that would be. But they wanted to make sure that they showed that addition because it is coming soon.
And then the car wash is addition to, yeah, that wasn't originally in the plans, was it?
Well, we never saw anything for this particular, this is the first that we've ever seen for anything. We've only dealt with the section that was on the other side of the Mazinad. This is the first we've seen of anything. So them showing this is not something new. It's just the fact that they've never had anything for this property shown at all.
Answer question?
Is that going to be a car wash slash truck wash also or just a car wash? Do you already know?
From my understanding, it's strictly a car wash. Now, they do have a separate area where they have pumps as well as separate parking for the trucks that are shown behind where the convenience store is. So they won't be visible from, um, fifteen, but from my understanding, um, and also based upon the turn radiuses that they gave us while we were reviewing, it's strictly for small vehicles. It is not for trucks.
So we have a motion and a second for, uh, eleven G four. Have we answered all the questions and, uh, this time I'd ask for a, a roll call.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wellington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Motion carries. We go to motion from Streets and Grades, Alderman Wiggington?
On behalf of Streets and Grades Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve Hank's excavating, the amount of three hundred twenty-three dollars, seven, three hundred twenty-three seventy-three dollars and ten cents for Union Avenue Street improvements. CDBG funds so moved.
Motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Dillman. Do I hear discussion about this motion? Roll call.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
What, Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Motion carries. We go to communications. Madam Clerk?
Administration.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. We got administration. I skipped right over it. I'd ask for a motion to approve scrapping a nineteen ninety-six Jeep Cherokee, Cherokee, boy, that's as bad as Jack Flash. Uh, VIN number one J four F J two seven S eight T L twenty-two sixty-eight thirty to Pauling, Towing, Towing LLC from the Health and Housing Department. In exchange for three vehicles to use for training by the fire department. Motion by Alderman Elmore, second by Alderman Schaefer. Everybody kind of understands that. We talked about it in the committee. Uh, roll call.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Abstain.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Motion carries. Communications now.
Can I read them all together?
Anybody?
Together, together.
Read them together. Yes.
Can you put, uh, twelve C out of that, please?
You want twelve C out of there?
No, I just read separate.
Okay, so read twelve A, B, and D.
Okay. Twelve A, Community Outreach Summer twenty eighteen, oh seven twenty-eight eighteen, request from Call to Worship Ministries to hold their summer twenty eighteen community outreach event Saturday, July twenty-eighth. Oh, that should be twenty eighteen, not twenty nineteen. Ten AM to four PM, street closure request, area of North Forty-seventh Street directly in front of church. Additional services requested, barricades. Twelve B, Queen of Peace Blessed Sacrament, five K, zero nine fifteen of eighteen, request from Queen of Peace and Blessed Sacrament for a five K event on Saturday, September fifteenth, twenty eighteen. From three thirty PM to four thirty PM, rolling street closures along five K route through Ogles subdivision. Additional services requested, barricades. Twelve D, Blood Drive, zero eight eighteen of eighteen, request from St. Clair Lodge, number twenty-four AF and AM, a Sonic Lodge, to use up to twenty parking spaces in the parking lot. Located on the north side of the two hundred block of East A Street between North Jackson and North Church Street for a blood drive on Saturday, August eighteenth, twenty eighteen. No city services requested.
Do I hear a motion to approve these three communications? Alderman Pousa, second by Alderman Schaefer. Any questions on these three that were just read?
Yes, Your Honor, I asked a question on twelve A. Was there any communication from CBS Pharmacy about, uh, what the impact might be to their, uh, drive-through pickup window?
Well, they'll still have access to that whole parking lot.
Yeah, that whole.
The, they're just taking those first five spots. The, there's access off the back of that parking lot and still to the front of that parking lot. So the, the parking lot itself into CBS is not going to be blocked at all.
Yeah, the question was, do we have any communication from CBS?
Um, I don't know.
I want to say somebody told me they talked to the manager, but I'm not a hundred percent.
Yeah, they might be forty-six oh nine West Main. Cause I asked him to go around all the businesses there. I just, he didn't mark specifically if they were a business. He just gave me addresses.
We have a motion and a second to approve those three communications as just read. If there's no additional cor- corrections, all in favor approving those three communications signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We now go back to twelve C.
Bubble East Graduation, ten thirteen eighteen, request from Tavern on Main to hold a Bubble East Graduation Saturday, October thirteenth, twenty eighteen. Five PM to twelve AM, October fourteenth, twenty eighteen, street closure request, half block of North Church Street to alley from five PM to one AM, October fourteenth, twenty eighteen. Along with use of gaslight park. Additional services requested, barricades, no parking signs, and picnic tables. And that is a correction. It's actually the, it's a Bubble East, um, nineteen seventy-three reunion. He originally put in graduation.
His class is seventy-three reunion.
It's a reunion and a real graduation, yeah.
Can I answer your questions? Okay, do we hear a motion to approve? Huh? Yes, well, let's get a motion first before we start to, do I hear a motion to approve? Alderman Elmore, second by Consilla. Now we have open for questions, Alderman Wygant.
I'd like to know, um, I know I see this on here all the time. How many times has he had the street closed this year already?
I, I've not kept track because it stops at the alley. It doesn't affect any other business, huh?
Are we showing favoritism to this one spot?
What's that?
Are we showing favoritism to this one place, letting them close the street?
There's, there's no other restaurant that's asked for it. He's, he or the Wine Tap would be the closest ones that could access it, uh, easily. Uh, it brings probably sometimes an extra hundred people downtown to, to spend money. Uh, we don't, I have not, and all the times we have done it, which isn't probably as many as you think, but it's a number. Uh, I've not had one complaint to my office about this being closed. It's never been a problem. Please, I'm looking back at the chief or the assistant chief. We've never had a complaint to them. Like I said, the alleys are still open. The parking lots are open. And, uh, it, it brings extra people and extra revenue downtown.
Well, I understand that. I understand. I just wonder, you know, if he's getting favoritism or, you know, we decide to.
No, we're not competing. It's not like we're giving one over another. It's just he's basically the only one that's big enough to handle an extra hundred people right there and serve them. I think the Wine Tap did at one time that I know of in the past several years, couple of years ago. But we're not gonna, you know, it's gotta be something convenient where you're, you know, you're not gonna have to, we're not gonna make it more cumbersome where we gotta have the rest of the block so they can pull trucks and everything to unload. Right now, it works pretty, it works pretty well. So, yes, sir.
And you know, Mayor, from five ten to one AM, uh, just about around a Saturday evening, I would think would be closed by then. It should not impact, uh, business anywhere in that, in that area. But like you say, if it brings a hundred extra people downtown with some of the new restaurants we've got, they might eventually spill over.
Well, and.
I understand where Mr. Wygant's going as far as street closure.
They start there and they go other places. So, I mean, I'll be honest with you. You get a graduation class and that's right around my age, people. They have probably a few extra dollars in the pocket maybe to spend and let them spend it in Bellville. So I think it's great. So we have a motion and we have a second, correct?
Correct.
And, uh, if you're all in favor of this and, uh, to approve this, uh, request, this communication signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Petitions, we have none. Resolutions, I'd ask for a motion to read Resolution thirty-three thirty-six by title only. Motion by Wiggington, second by, uh, Schaefer. All in favor of reading that resolution by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Fourteen A, Resolution thirty-three thirty-six, twenty eighteen, a resolution authorizing bank loan for Vector truck.
Do I hear a motion to approve this resolution? Motion by Schaefer, second by Pousa. Any discussion on this resolution? This is the, the loan that we need to establish. We have to have a resolution for the Vector, for Royce's Vector. Any discussion? Roll call.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygant?
Motion carries. Ordinances. So let's look here real quick. We can, we can lump a few of them together. Let's hold out ordinance says fifteen E and fifteen G. Um, is there any others? Can we?
Fifteen B.
Fifteen B.
And fifteen E.
So fifteen B, and then you had fifteen E, and looks like, uh.
Fifteen G.
G. Oh, we had abstention on G, so let's do those three separately, okay?
Read the rest of it again.
So let's go ahead. If there's no problem, let's read A, C. You know which one you're reading?
Yes.
Tell, tell her what we're reading. Let's re, let's get a motion first of all. I need a motion to approve. Yeah, tell them.
Um, fifteen A, fifteen C, fifteen D, fifteen F, fifteen H, fifteen I, fifteen J, fifteen K, fifteen L, fifteen M, and fifteen N.
Do I hear a motion and a second? Motion by Schaefer, second by Wiggington. Any discussion on the ones just identified? This is a motion to read by title only and as the, and as a group, this group. All in favor of this motion to read this group just read by title only and together signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Fifteen A, ordinance eighty-two eleven, twenty eighteen, and ordinance amending ordinance number seventy-eight twenty-nine to add territory to the Bubble Enterprise Zone. Fifteen C, ordinance eighty-two thirteen, twenty eighteen, and ordinance amending Article fifteen land usage of the revised code of ordinances of the city of Bubble, Illinois by adding Chapter one sixty-three. Small wireless facilities providing for the regulation of and application for small wireless facilities. Fifteen D, ordinance eighty-two fourteen, twenty eighteen, Brook Taylor Estates, Austin Engineering Vacation Plat. Fifteen F, ordinance eighty-two sixteen, twenty eighteen, ordinance amending Title eight, no, seven, traffic code, Chapter seventy-six, parking regulations by repealing ordinance seventy-six oh three, twenty twelve. Fifteen H, ordinance eighty-two eighteen, twenty eighteen, a zoning ordinance in regards to thirty-one, June eighteen, Arthur and Janice Nurseur. Fifteen I, ordinance eighty-two nineteen, twenty eighteen, a zoning ordinance in regards to thirty-two, June eighteen, Kristy Robertson. Fifteen J, ordinance eighty-two twenty, twenty eighteen, a zoning ordinance in regards to thirty-three, June eighteen, The Basic Initiative. Fifteen K, ordinance eighty-two twenty-one, twenty eighteen, a zoning ordinance in regards to thirty-five, June eighteen, Susan Dyer. Fifteen L, ordinance eighty-two twenty-two, twenty eighteen, a zoning ordinance in regards to thirty-six, June eighteen, Susan Dyer. Fifteen M, ordinance eighty-two twenty-three, twenty eighteen, a zoning ordinance in regards to thirty-seven, June eighteen, Susan Dyer. Fifteen N, ordinance eighty-two twenty-four, twenty eighteen, and ordinance authorizing the sale and conversion of personal property nineteen ninety-six Jeep Cherokee carryall, Housing Department vehicle.
I'm asking for a motion to approve ordinances fifteen A, fifteen C, fifteen D, fifteen F, fifteen H, fifteen I, fifteen J, fifteen K, fifteen L, fifteen M, and fifteen N. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Pousa to appro, to approve those just read. Any discussion on those al, ordinances? Roll call.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Those motions carries. Now I'd like to ask for a, a motion to read, uh, by title only, ordinance fifteen B, which is ordinance eighty-two twelve. I hear a motion by Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Ga, to read this ordinance eighty-two twelve, which is listed as fifteen B in tonight's agenda by title only. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Fifteen B, ordinance eighty-two twelve, twenty eighteen, and ordinance amending ordinance number seventy-eight twenty-one, twenty-nine to add territory to the Bubble Enterprise Zone.
I hear a motion to approve this. Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman, uh, Wiggington. Any discussion on eighty-two twelve? Roll call.
Barfield?
No.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bittner?
No.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Motion carries. We go to ordinance number fifteen A. Is someone willing to make a motion to approve ordinance eighty-two fifteen and read by title only, rather? Alderman Schaefer, second?
Fifteen E.
I'm sorry, fifteen E. I looked right at it. Alderman Ga, second in motion to read this ordinance by title only. All in favor of read it by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Fifteen E, ordinance eighty-two fifteen, twenty eighteen, The Villas of Hollybrook, Phillips Investments, Final Plat.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Alderman Pousa and second by Hazel. Discussion on this all item here, this ordinance, which is gonna be eighty-two fifteen. Roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bittner?
No.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
No.
Ordinance passes. We go to the last one that we haven't touched yet, put our hands on, fifteen G, which is ordinance number eighty-two seventeen. Do I hear a motion to read by title only? Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Steele. Any discussion on reading by title only? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Fifteen G, ordinance eighty-two seventeen, twenty eighteen, a zoning ordinance in regards to thirty, June eighteen, Sikorski signs, Tim Meisner, Raymond James.
I hear a motion to approve. Alderman Pousa, second by Alderman Schaefer. Do I hear any discussion about ar, this ordinance eighty-two seventeen? Roll call.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Abstain.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington. Barfield.